Planning Board meeting for the town of Newbury. Today is the 21st of July, 2021. My name is Pete Pagos and to my right is?
Larry Murphy.
Leslie Matthews.
Mary Stone.
Woody Knight.
And?
Martha Taylor.
And?
Emily Nelson.
And sir?
Brian Warner.
Okay, great, we're all here. I just want to let you know that George Morse will be participating remotely via Zoom for tonight's meeting so that all votes will be recorded, all votes. We will have a public hearing today. It'll be at 7:15. And we have received a request from the applicant to continue the public hearing. We'll discuss that at 7:15. So, if I have the agenda correctly, we're going to do an appearance by Tom Zee for approval of Form D Performance Covenant. For the Performance Covenant Guarantee for construction of ways and installation of services for the proposed 15 Coleman Road OSRD subdivision project. It's all you, and there's your microphone, sir.
Tom Zarico, 15 SD Street in Amesbury. Thank you, Peter. The, I sent to Martha today a revised Form D covenant in the revised format that was requested. Hopefully, that's sufficient.
Yes, and it's in your packets.
Thank you. I expect to plan to have that signed by the mortgage holders after consent from the board, of course. My intent or expectation is, once we get the bulk of the work done, just to the point where we're eligible for building permits and probably some binder pavement and maybe some shoulder work and street plantings, we'll bond those in cash at that time and replace the covenant with a cash bond of appropriate size at that point. So, that's the intent on that. I'd also like to just discuss the recording plans. Martha, is this an appropriate thing to bring up right now? The recording plans, the size and dimension or contents of those plans?
You can bring it up. We still need to probably discuss it.
Okay. The plan set is 28 pages, as you probably know. We're typically, in the past, with most of our projects, have recorded just the definitive subdivision plan set or layout plan itself. Those are actually the only pages that technically comply with zoning requirements for print size and a variety of other elements. As you know, the majority of the rest of the plan set is produced to comply with application requirements here. The registry doesn't have a direction to give on whether it's just the five or six pages of the definitive plan or the entire set. The issue for someone like me is that it's $105 for every page to record. Typically, what we've done is attach the entire 28-page plan set to the decision as an attachment. We'll plan that or record that document with all of those pages and then record the mile hour pages that are appropriate that the registry accepts because of form. So, I don't know if that's something that we've been discussing or if it's a decision for the next few weeks.
Okay. Martha, your guidance on that?
Well, as I've told time, typically what's happened is the entire set gets recorded. So, that's been the convention.
Okay.
But? You're gonna have to cancel the golf trip.
If that's what it is, that's what it is. It's not an issue. It's purely a question, and I think over time, maybe those things, those standards, might evolve. I think it's worth bringing up for future discussions, whether it's for me or somebody else, that's all. The, I expect that we actually come out of our appeal period on August 2nd, I think. I hope or plan to be here to hopefully have those plans signed on, at the meeting at the 4th, so that we can go right to record with all of our appropriate documents, including the covenant. I had committed to either preserve or rebuild the workshop studio building. I've actually found somebody who is comfortable and confident that they can move it, which I was happy to hear. So, we're planning on, I've contracted with them, to actually move it to the site that we identified on the plans. They actually have a scheduled slot available in August, and I've sent a message to the Historical Society or Historical Committee to see if that's acceptable with them as well. So, we're expecting to take it intact to its new location.
So, will that be Lot 1?
That'll be on Lot 1, yes, with the house and barn, and we're already designed and spec'd out a stone veneered foundation, you know, reminiscent of what it's on today. So, it won't be a new concrete-looking foundation that it should be on. So, that's just in the way of an update on that.
Good for you.
Essex County Greenbelt, I just got an email from them about an hour ago. Their land committee had recommended to their board accepting the property. We did a site walk a couple of weeks ago. I just got a message from Chris that the board voted to accept it and that we'll follow up with them, you know, over the next couple of weeks or months. So, that's good progress. The erosion controls, if you've driven by, are all in place already. There's a 12-inch erosion tube out there at the limit of work for the whole site. The witchstone protection, what we've done so far, on the site side of the witchstone, five feet back from it, we've staked and installed caution tape behind it on the site side. We've then, five feet behind that, 10 feet from the witchstone, we've put a boulder barrier all the way around, around so that no vehicles or anything else can get near it. Five feet beyond that, we have the erosion control and another set of stakes with caution tape. Other than putting it in a vault and making it invisible, I don't know if there's something else we should do, but we've taken those steps now in advance of having any heavy equipment out there doing anything. So, we really can't get near it from our side, if you will. On the street side, there's about four feet, eight inches from the edge of pavement to the face of the stone. So, it's very close, as you all know. I've actually put two stakes out there, six feet on either side of the stone, two to two and a half feet back from the pavement. I, with consent, with everybody's approval, want to put in two 4x4 wooden posts, you know, with a turn top on either side of it. That's back, and we don't have a lot of room to work with. I don't think, I don't think it's a safe thing to put granite posts there because it's too close for plowing or anything else, but wooden posts would at least be a good visual barrier. There'd be 12-foot spread between them. I think it's the best additional barrier on the street side to make people aware of its location and, I guess, doubly assure that plows and everything else, even more so in the past, are aware of its existence. So, that's my point.
Let me ask, Martha, does highway have to be involved in this discussion because it's in the right-of-way?
Um, I, yeah.
Okay.
Bring James into it.
Okay, so we probably want to do that to make sure?
Yeah, it was ever appropriate, but I think that's my plan. I wanted to at least present it and tell you what I have done, and we've given a lot of thought to it. I mean, the thought on this doesn't stop with the decision from my side, just so you know. The stone location, I want to clarify, we've had survey stake at the center line of the road where it intersects Coleman. The center line of the new road to the witchstone is 38 feet. Okay? Our roadway, our paved road, if you recall, is 22 feet. So, 11 feet towards, out of that 38 comes out, and there's still 27 feet from our paved road. Now, there's a radius or an apron, if you will, turning radius at the entrance. That radius is designed to spec. It shows the stone still about 12 feet from our paved radius. We, I think, have some liberty or some luxury to maybe improve that or have a little bit of wiggle room on site. When we do a pre-construction meeting, I'll have that, you know, a little bit better defined in the field so that whoever comes out can actually see. But there's a comfortable clearance, is what I wanted to express, from the planned new pavement to the witchstone itself where it is. I think there may have been an expression or concern that it might end up, like, right up next to the asphalt, but it won't be that way, just for reference. I think there's a comfortable distance and a way of keeping it safe. The, and the last thing in way of update, there's two big, mature maple trees out in the right-of-way. There's actually more, but there's two that we think and still think are a little bit in jeopardy with the new road. We may be able to massage in the apron area a little bit and not disturb those roots. My plan, when we do tree cutting, is to leave those trees, just take the bottom three or four branches that are clearly in jeopardy, and whether I was there or not, they're in jeopardy. They're low-lying branches that could be hit by trucks or otherwise, is to take those off, leave those trees, let us get to the binder pavement, and then we can have a collective decision about whether or not it's safe to leave them or better to take them. But I think they can stay right now, and I think they might survive, so.
So, just that they are in the right-of-way?
We're in the right-of-way.
Okay, so any tree removal or trimming has to go through our tree warden and be subject to a public hearing?
Yeah.
So, he'll have to come out and take a look at them?
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay.
And that was it. I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on those things.
Super appreciate it, and I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate all the attention to the father stone. I want to call it the father stone rather than the witch stone because, I know, everybody calls it the witch one. There was a mother stone. Now, on the, when you get to the, when you're finally done and you have that 12-foot from the end of your pavement to the stone, and that's on Lot 7, right?
That's Lot 7, yeah.
Are you gonna try to put anything in Lot 7 so that nothing can kind of go that way?
Well, I think that boulder wall will just pretty it up. Oh, I think that's permanent.
And you're gonna leave that?
Oh, yeah, that's something that was not built by hand. We put that in just in the last week by machine. They're large stones, you know, there's no vehicles gonna move through them.
Wonderful.
And I think they're not the prettiest stones. They're, I would love to be able to take some larger stones from the site that are nicely weathered, nicely aged, and lay them, you know, in an appropriate arc behind them in the same place, not some of these rusty-colored angular-looking pieces that we have to work with right now. If we can find some nicer stones, we'd like to do it with those.
I think as your project goes along, you might bump into a stone or two here.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we will.
Well, that's good. That's wonderful. Let me see if the board members have any questions. Leslie, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Mary, do you have any questions?
Terrific.
Thank you. Woody, any questions?
No questions, sounds good.
Hey, George, how are you out there?
Good, how are you?
Wonderful.
I have no questions.
All right, loud and clear. Thank you so much, sir. Wonderful. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it very much.
All right. Thank you all very much. See you again soon.
Martha, do we need anything else from Tom?
Uh, I don't, well, I guess, take a motion on that Form D, yeah.
All right, I'd move the, to approve the Form D performance covenant.
Second. Second, okay. Is there any discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion, sorry. Discussion on the motion, Leslie. Discussion on the motion, George?
No.
Wonderful, discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion?
No.
Okay, on the motion, how do you vote?
Yes.
Wonderful, Leslie, how do you vote? George, how do you vote, sir, on the motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Give her a favor, and?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, wonderful. I think that concludes the business.
Thank you all very much.
Wonderful, thanks so much. And I think, are we close?
We're like two minutes.
Oh, we have two minutes, okay. So, in two minutes, let's see, what do we have that we can talk about?
Financial report.
June financial report, which is right?
Oops, did I not put it there?
Do you put it here? Hold on, folks, let me get the right, there it is. The Planning Board financial report for June 2021, payroll and invoices authorized. Number one, payroll warrants for town planner and planning administrator. PR 21-25 for pay period ending 6/5, as well as PR 21-26 for pay period ending 6/19/21. The second is Planning Board expense invoices for staples office supplies of 6/24/21. Verizon wireless for Planning Board iPad of 6/24/21. And then third is escrow account, Joe Suwaka, regarding three Newbury Port Turnpike peer review of 6/23/21. And another escrow account for Joe Suwaka, for Shendel Drive Extension, peer review 6/23/21. So, the financial report is done, and we are coming up very close to 7:15. So, prior to a discussion, let me see, I just want to make sure, Martha, are we pretty close on time? I keep on bumping into the wrong thing on my phone.
Yeah, I got one minute.
All right, one minute. Do we want to start a Select Board's report in one minute, Leslie?
Really nothing to report. They had a couple of meetings that lasted a minute and one over just a couple, a minute. So, it was just appointments and a clamping license.
Wonderful. ZBA, Larry, are you that quick?
Yeah, very. I think I told you last time that Howard Traister was leaving the board after some 20-plus years. Howard, however, has agreed to stay on for a few months to ease the transition. In the last meeting, Eric Stone was elected as the chair. That's about it.
Wonderful, thank you. Concom, I don't have anything to report. I was not in attendance at the last meeting. MVPc?
Nothing there. They're off for the summer, and tomorrow's planning director's meeting has been rescheduled for August.
Wonderful. Well, I love those type of reports. We did it in two minutes, I think, totally. So, it is 7:15. So, at this time, we received, this is regarding 105 High Road, OSRD special permit applicant of DePiero LLC. We received an email yesterday, which was July 20th, from attorney Jill Mann on behalf of Mark DePiero requesting a continuance of the public hearing on this OSRD special permit to August 4th. We had a request for a continuance at our last meeting. We gave that continuance to this meeting. So, Jill, tell us what's up.
So, good evening. Jill Mann here on behalf of DePiero Property, DePiero LLC. I'm the applicant for 105 High Street special permit. So, after our last meeting, we had that decision. So, the direction was to really discuss some of the, I guess, suggestions to modify the decision with attorney Winner. And we did so, and we had discussed basically the process pursuant to which you would approve the actual layout of the subdivision, because there's a little confusion relative to definitive subdivision and just an OSRD that would be one large lot. We did actually work out a nice plan to be able to have Fee Simple conveyed if the Conservation Commission were to elect to hold title to the open space parcel. And then the one thing that we also had worked on and had discussed was what would the process be relative to approving the final layout? So, layout of the road, the landscaping, the storm water, and all of those different components. And pursuant to the actual bylaw, it basically says, look, you have an OSRD plan, the applicability is you go through all of the requirements of 97 and all the requirements of 112. I'm not telling you anything you don't know. And then it gives the proponent the option, if they so choose, instead of just doing one big development, of actually going out and doing a definitive subdivision plan. So, that just works through like 97, 5C, 4A. Then you have all of the other provisions that basically kind of direct you for definitive subdivision. If you really go through and you're looking at it with an eye towards how are we going to do this with condo or with a definitive, it would appear that within the confines of 97 is how you would actually approve a condominium plan, because this is neither a site plan approval nor a definitive. So, what attorney Winner and I had discussed was, you know, maybe what makes the most sense is to give the board the most control over that particular plan and approve not just a concept plan pursuant to which a subsequent plan must substantially conform, but rather to design the plan and submit it to you in a form that is the plan. There is no, if you will, subsequent filing with you where you have to try and match to ensure that we meet the same design requirements. Excuse me. So, in order to do that, we need to revise the decision slightly, and it was already done, and attorney Winner, I had kind of discussed it, and I think he might have previewed a little bit of it. But in addition to that, it means that we need to have a final plan. Now, we had submitted to Ms. Taylor a draft, but nothing that I don't believe that was ever submitted to this board with a final storm water report and a final design of the roadway showing the actual details, so the cross-section of the roadway, what those design elements would be, where all the landscaping is, all of the real heavy-duty design process. And in order to finish that, though, Joe Suwaka has to review those details. So, even though we don't comply or do not have to comply with subdivision control pursuant to section, I have put on my glasses because I'm too old to read without them, pursuant to the requirement under 95C13, we have to actually ensure that there is a roadway design that meets all of the typical street requirements, just not subdivision control. So, all of the things that are required to be able to approve a final plan are actually located within your 97. So, I had the engineer tell me, how long will it take you to completely finalize the plan so that you can send it to Mr. Suwaka, have him do a review, and then provide Ms. Taylor with Mr. Suwaka's final review of the plan so that the board can properly evaluate it during a decision process? And I was told that it would take approximately three weeks. So, that actually pushes us beyond August 4th to your August, I don't know, meeting? Is it the 18th? I'm uncertain. But that was a conversation that attorney Winner and I had not had yet, because I just found that out tonight, that Mr. Suwaka and Steve Sawyer had a conversation. So, that brings me around full to the point of, the reason we're asking for a continuance is because the process for approving the plan is actually within the OSRD, and that means we still have a little bit more work to do in order for this board to truly properly evaluate the plan as submitted by DePiero. And at that, I would ask if you have any questions, or I don't know if attorney Winner wants to add as well. Thank you.
So, this is basically, we're discussing now a request for a continuance, and we've heard from attorney Mann as to why they're asking, they're requesting a continuance. Okay, great. Brian, please, yes, if you would.
If you would ask me. But if I could offer a couple of comments for the board to sort of explain two things. One, sort of what we've been doing since the last meeting, and then, second, you know, what the options are for the board tonight? You know, what's the question in front of you and what your choices are? So, I want to preface all that by saying, we haven't opened the public hearing tonight, so we're only talking about process right now. Nothing substantive about the plan. You're not hearing any more testimony or evidence. Right now, we've just been talking about substance, so the plan itself hasn't changed. So, what attorney Mann and I have been discussing are mechanics, you know, what kind of process is contemplated by the decision. And what got that sort of rolling is that after the last meeting, the board had some comments on the draft decision, and I took those back with me and made some revisions to the draft decision for you. And we received some comments from attorney Mann. And as we started to plow into the mechanics of your bylaw and sort of overlay it onto what the application actually is proposing, there are some parts that don't fit together very well. And that's not, you know, that's not something that the applicant did intentionally, it's not something the bylaw did intentionally, it's just that some things don't fit more traditionally than, like, some of the other cases you may have had in applying the OSRD. So, one of the areas that we identified was, well, what are we doing with this open space mechanically? How is that gonna work? What does that process look like? You know, who starts it? Who makes the decision? You know, what timeline is the decision made? So, we wanted to refine that process so that everyone was on the same page and that when this decision ultimately leaves the board, everyone knows what to expect. There aren't any gaps or confusion, because if there were any, we'd just bring the applicant right back here looking for a modification. They'd say, I don't know how to comply with this. I don't know what we're supposed to do. Or, you know, from our side, it might be town officials saying, oh, my God, I just got this thing from the applicant, and I'm reading the decision, and I don't know what to do with it. What am I supposed to do? So, we wanted to refine that and polish it so that it was very clear what that process looked like. So, that was one area. And the second area, which I think is even more fundamental, it's this condominium idea. So, the bylaw in, by and large, talks about a subdivision application coming after the special permit, a two-step process. And then in other places, it explains that the applicant can elect to proceed with a condominium development. Well, by definition, the condominium development doesn't fit within the subdivision control law, so it's not a subdivision. So, then what's the other option? Site plan review? Well, if you look at your site plan bylaw, it's not that either. So, we all agree, and I don't think there's any dispute, and attorney Mann can correct me if I'm wrong, that there is another step after the special permit that the board is going to review and must review, you know, additional design details, talking about landscaping, the roadway, you know, storm water, you know, things like that. So, there's an additional layer to this that we haven't seen yet, so we all agree on that. But the bylaw doesn't make it clear what that is. So, if they go in the direction of subdivision, well, that doesn't quite fit. If they go in the direction of site plan, well, that doesn't quite fit. So, we started talking about a third concept, which is, is it possible for us to lay out the blueprint that would accomplish the same substance, meaning you still get final plans to review, you still get all the information, detail, everything you would ever receive in a subdivision application and/or site plan application, but can we lay out that blueprint right now in the special permit? So, that's to actually jump over and get to what we'd be doing anyway in a subsequent application. So, we started working on that conceptually, how that would work. So, just to back up again, there's, there has to be a second chapter. One is subdivision control, that doesn't fit. Two is site plan, that doesn't really fit. And three is this sort of hybrid where we roll it into the special permit. So, we started talking about how, what would that look like and how would it work? And we discussed, you know, creating a matrix of what would be required under a subdivision application. So, we can see, well, what is it that we would get at the next public hearing? You know, what plans, what detail, what would we be expecting from that that we don't have yet? Let's lay it out. What provisions don't apply? Let's lay that out. What provisions would apply but you might need a waiver from? Let's lay that out. So, let's create that grid and see what we're really talking about. So, this conversation, just due to our schedules and the timeline and everything, is, we had hoped to do it sooner, but we've, you know, done it more recently than that. So, this has just started to evolve into a level where we're starting to get down to, you know, drafting and seeing what this really looks like on paper. So, we're trying to work out how to apply your bylaw in this context. So, that's how we got to where we're at now, and we've exchanged drafts. None of them have come to the board because they're just conceptual. They're nothing that I've endorsed or said, yep, that's the decision, let's get that back to the board. So, we're just batting around ideas yet. So, that's why you haven't seen a new draft yet. So, just so you know, this is, there isn't a, you know, a sort of secret draft that we're waiting to show you. It's just because I've held it back because I don't think it's matured enough to the point where it's ready for discussion. We're still working out some of those issues. So, the applicant, realizing that we're back here again tonight, said, well, we're not really ready to discuss the new decision. The only thing in front of you is the last decision you had, which I made the changes that you requested. So, you have that decision. So, the applicant is now requesting that we continue to another date so that I can then put a second decision in front of you, one you haven't seen yet, that'll address all the things attorney Mann and I just discussed. So, that's why they're requesting the continuance. So, now let me get on to the second part of what I wanted to say. Here are the choices in front of you. You can continue and give us time to keep working on this, if that's the will of the board. Two is, you can not continue, you can deny that request, open the public hearing, do whatever you would have done tonight, and either close it or continue it as you see fit based on whatever happens this evening. And that might include actually voting the decision you have in front of you, if it saw fit, to just say, we've had a lot on our plates with respect to this project, and we'd just like to close it and vote what we've got. We think it's good enough. That's a possibility. The third is, because we're not talking about the substance, the actual project is not changing while this is happening. So, that's done. The third option is, you can open the public hearing tonight and close it, and then instruct me to continue working on a V2, if you will, a version 2 of the decision, and bring it back to you at your next meeting. So, you can close the public hearing tonight and that, just stop that process, and then I'll continue to work on the decision and I'll present you with a new one. Now, you have 90 days from the close of the public hearing to actually finish the decision, sign it, vote it, and get it out the door. So, that can unfold sort of after the public hearing. You don't need to keep the public hearing open to accomplish that. And since we're talking about mechanical stuffs, I can continue to work with attorney Mann, continue to correspond with Martha, and come back to the board with a more refined version of what you've already seen that addresses these issues. So, do you want me to go over that one more time? Because this is a lot that we're putting in front of you. Yeah, I mean, I know, we've both been talking for a long time, so this is a lot to digest in a very short period of time, so I apologize. So, option one, just continue right now, and we'll go back and we'll continue to work and we'll come back at whichever meeting you tell us to come back at. Option two, just continue on with the public hearing. Option two, just continue on with the public hearing. Open it up, deny the request to continue, open it up, take whatever testimony and evidence you want, and then decide whether you're ready to close it and vote tonight, or close it and move on. Or, you can keep it open, you can just handle it like you would any other night. And then, option three is, open it, close it, and then instruct me to write a decision consistent with the wishes of the board. And then, you'd have 90 days for me to come back and do that. Obviously, it would be sooner than 90 days, but that would stop the public hearing, and that would give me a new time to just finish up the decision and get it back in front of you.
So, let me ask a question, if I could. Ryan, if we went with option three, basically, there's no new substance to be presented, there's no new information to be discussed, that would basically propel the process of you working with Attorney Mann to, to merge these, 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 these concepts that you have into the final draft?
So, yes, but let me add one caveat.
Yes.
So, if you do that, option three, you close the public hearing, we write a decision, then they would have to come back in another process. So, we would outline that process in the decision. So, that's step one, we write the decision, outline the process. And then, there'd be a step two, a chapter two, if you will, where all the information that Attorney Mann suggested they would get from, from Steve, and Steve would give to Joe, that would happen at another process. So, this public hearing would close, a new one would have to start. So, that's if you close tonight and instruct me to write the decision. If you keep it open and continue it to another night, well, then, we can start to do all those things in this public hearing. The, the one sort of hesitation I have for that is, I don't know Joe's schedule, I don't know Steve's schedule, I don't know the board's schedule. That's opening up a whole new chapter into a, a public hearing that's already been going on for a very long time. And it's moving it from the special permit considerations to more site design considerations, which normally you get in a subdivision application, but we'd now be backing that into a special permit. So, in my own mind, and this is just my personal opinion, and not trying to impose it on the board, in my own mind, those are discrete phases of a review. So, I think Attorney Mann is more inclined, I don't mean to put words in your mouth, is more inclined to do it in one bite, and keep the public hearing open, and hopefully accomplish all those things in the special permit process, and then issue what, for lack of a better term, is a comprehensive OSRD permit. In my mind, conceptually, it, it seems to be two discrete phases, and it's, you know, we didn't reach a conclusion to that discussion, but we had that discussion.
So, what I'd like to do, if we could, understanding our three options, is kind of just get a feel from the board, if they're looking at option one, looking at option two, or looking at option three, just to kind of see where people are at. Does that make sense to you, Larry? Okay. So, I'm going to start with you, and you can let us know whether you're, you're leaning towards an option one, an option two, and option three, and an option one would be a continuance. Option two would be, we continue, we open the public hearing, which we have not done yet, and we would go through whatever that would be. An option three would be, we open it, we close it, and we direct them to do, to start writing.
I have a question first, and maybe Martha, you might be the better person. When do you think we could get something from the Conservation Commission about holding the, the open space, whether they want to or not? Is that something that could be resolved within the next couple of weeks?
Uh-huh, that's a good question. I don't know, I'm assuming something would have to be submitted to them formally, an offer made? Or?
I mean, that might take one big issue off the, off the table.
Yeah, and if I may. I, I don't know how formal we need to be in order to get that mechanically in front of them and to get them to consider it. Now, obviously, they're not going to have a plan, they're not going to have an offer, you know, to accept land, that would come later. But I, I think they could probably get it on the agenda, if Attorney Mann's client asked to be on the agenda, and the chair were inclined to put it on, to just discuss it and see, you know, sort of what the, the sense of the meeting was, sense of the commission was with respect to the issue. So, we could get that feedback, but it wouldn't be a formal vote to accept or not accept, but that wouldn't come anyway. Because until this process ends, they're not going to create a lot to even offer. So, we could, we could probably get a, an answer at least.
So, does that answer your question?
It, it, I think it does, yeah. I mean, I'm just thinking, if maybe we could at least put that issue to bed. You know, it might be to everyone's, might help you guys, frankly.
I mean, I could, I could apply immediately, because it doesn't require a public hearing, I'd just have to ask.
Yeah. And, and I don't think there's been any, any interest expressed by nonprofits or anything like that to, to take this property. So, it's really, it comes down to the Concom or the Homeowners Association. And I, I think what I'm hearing from counsel on both sides here is, is, you know, we, we can do a little bit better with the mechanics of the decision. I mean, quite frankly, I would love to have wrapped this up tonight, had anticipated we would, but, you know, you, you point to some issues with our bylaw, too, that, that need to be dealt with. The only thing I would say, I, I, as far as opening and taking testimony tonight, if you want to, there are members of the public here, fine, or we could continue it, I'd just say, give yourself enough time so that we don't have to be looking at another continuance.
So, is your feeling that you would like to go with a continuance, or would you like to open? Because I, I'm just trying, I want to call everybody.
Yeah. I mean, you have members of the public here, you might want to take some testimony. And I, I'm a little hesitant to suggest that we close it out, just because we've got issues like Conservation Commission and Murphy's Law, what will go wrong, you know, can go, what can go wrong, will go wrong, you know? So, at least, we don't paint ourselves into a corner.
Okay, great. Let me ask George. Hey, George, could you hear that whole conversation? Could you hear that whole conversation?
Not all, but most of it.
Okay. So, we basically have three options this evening before we go any further, and I'm kind of curious if you have a feeling as to whether you'd like door number one, door number two, or door number three?
Explain one, two, and three.
Sure. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have Brian do it, because he's much better.
These lyrics are terrible.
I, I'm sorry.
And, and this microphone, I assume, is just recording? It's not?
Yeah, it's for the TV.
It's not transmitting directly to George?
No, no.
I'll do the best I can, George. Option one is, don't open the public hearing tonight and just continue it to a later date, with the expectation that Attorney Mann and I will continue to refine the draft decision and work out some of these issues, and then be back in front of you with a, a more refined, polished decision that addresses the things we've discussed. Option two is, open the public hearing and have a regular hearing night. Open it, take testimony, evidence, whatever else happens, comments from the public, and then you can decide what to do next. Option three is, open it, close it, and then instruct me to finish the decision and get it back to you within the statutory timeframe for a vote.
Option three.
Okay. Yes, we can hear you, George. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Leslie, where are you at with this?
Well, I would lean towards option one, but I feel it would be fair to the people that did come in this evening, to be respectful to them, considering that they came to the last one.
Yep.
So, I'm going to go with two.
Okay, number two. Let me ask Woody. Woody, your, your thoughts, sir?
I was leaning more towards option one, but in due respect to the people here, I'd go with option two.
Okay. All right.
This has been going on for a long time, so.
Yeah.
It'd be, it'd be nice to go with option three, but option two would be best because of everything I've just said.
Okay. Mary, how do you feel?
Option two, again, is very important that we hear from the people who have shown up twice and not had a chance. So, it makes sense, and two is my...
Okay, all right. So, I think what I'm hearing from the board is, we're going to open our meeting tonight, and we'll do our business that we need to do with that, and we'll, we'll proceed. With that being said, I'd like to officially open tonight's planning board meeting for 105 High Road, OSRD, special permit, OSRD, open space residential development, application 105 High Road, map R48, lot 49, applicant DePero, LLC owner, Mitchell Manten formerly, author, and Sandra Costanas. Is there anything new that the applicant has that they'd like to provide tonight to the board? Anything new? No? Okay, great. Is there anyone from the public that would like to produce anything new tonight to the board? Sir? I'm going to ask that you state your name and your address, and what, what you'd like to tell us.
Matthew Kazaki, 41 Packer Street in Newbury. I own Tendecrop Farm and operate it. Two days ago, I bought Catherine's farm, so now I'm not butter. I plan to farm this heavily, like I do everything. The first, so the first thing, there's a few questions in, that I would like to ask you, because I was not part of this whole thing, so it's all new to me. So, when I bought the land, the, there's a right of way that goes down the property line, mine and hers, it's 1,165 feet. The way it's wrote, it was done in 1866, upgraded by her, the way it is wrote, is I have seven feet on their side of the land that I will be using. They do not have seven feet on my side. They do have their seven feet on their side, but they are not allowed to go on mine. That is in the registry of deeds. I have large equipment, I will be using that. So, they will not be able to use that first seven feet as fences or lawns. We are going to use it. I plan to put electric fence around the whole property, because we're going to run some cattle at times. I plan to grow corn. I plan to grow vegetables. And I need to know what they're going to do to keep people off my land. And why I say this is, kids could go in the fields. When we're chopping corn, we have big machinery. I, one time, I saw a kid run out, two. If these kids get in the machinery, it's over. They're not going to be seen. Years ago, when I was a kid, and I worked for another farm, I was spraying, spraying corn for bugs. Kids come running behind the sprayer, they were soaked. That was an ipsej. So, we need to have a six-foot fence on their property, on the, around that property, goes 1,165 feet down. I think it's 400 feet to the right, I could be wrong, you can look it up. And then, it goes down where you people want to put the open space, another 1,000 feet. They've said that people can go into these woods and that. I want a fence along my property. I would like to have a green wall of abovites put also, the reason being, I have land on the other side of Riverview Drive. People put stone in my fields, they put wood in my fields, they dump leaves, they dump branches. One time, at one of the houses, we had lettuce growing. Everybody knows lettuce, it's like a funnel. Somebody decided to take their dog crap and throw it over the fence and cover my field. So, that cost me about $6,000. I couldn't pick it, you can't take that chance, obviously, it's done. They didn't know, I went and talked to them. I planted abovites on that land, Riverview Drive. I think if you go there, maybe there's 10 left, that's 2,200 feet. They cut them all down, and it was on my land. I planted in the same time as behind Tendecrop Farm, that, the green abovites. I don't personally like them, but people just come on your land. I'm, I'm in the food production business, I'm not in haying, I'm not in that. I grow food for us people. We're losing land when, a year ago, when there was no food on the shelves, I had food. I planned for it, and we increased it. Not that everybody shops there, but when you came to my store, I had food. When you went to other stores, they didn't have it. They couldn't up production, I did. So, the green wall that is behind Tendecrop Farm used to be shorter, because I planted them, they were this tall. When they got about eight feet tall, I was driving out there one time, and a golf ball bounced off my tractor. We have found hundreds out there. Thank God, the trees are now up high enough, and they don't come. But nobody cared. I mean, would you like to be out there walking, picking a flower, and you're getting whacked in the head by a golf ball? People don't care. You know? Luckily, it didn't hit me, but it happened. So, the reason that I'm talking to fence and the green wall is, I can't have people coming on that farm, and they do. I was in my blueberry field two weeks ago, which is where the bonfire is. I was standing, full bushes down. In that land, I have a road that comes down 500 feet, and it goes across about 1,000 feet, and then it goes back out by Riverview Drive. A motorcycle comes driving through, I have signs, "No trespassing." They come anyway. Never stopped, a Honda motorcycle, come off the road, come by, and left. So, we really can't have this stuff going on, and I can't have kids, because kids are kids, and parents are not always parents. So, it's a very big concern to me, on mine. We're going to have cattle there, sometimes it'll be a bull or two. I can't, and I'm not against, really against it, but we need to protect this farmland. And so, these are issues that I feel need to be addressed.
Well, I'm glad that you're the landowner of this property, and I congratulate you, and we, you know, we, we support the concept of Newbury continuing to be an agricultural community, because that's part of our heritage. And so, thank you, and I know the town appreciates all that your organization does. But I just want to, because you're new to the, new to the, new to this process, I'm going to direct, I just want, Brian, if you can just explain this whole easement thing, just so you understand what our role is and isn't in this process, just so you can have a clear perspective from town council, what, you know, where, where these waters are, just so they're not muddled and they're, they're clear. Brian, could you help me with that?
Sure, I'd be too. And if I may, offer another comment before that. The applicant's counsel is here, and has, of course, heard your comments, and I assume we'll, we'll report those to her client as well. But with respect to the easement, so this issue has come up, you know, historically in this public hearing process, I'm sure you're aware of that. And there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, what it means and doesn't mean with respect to, A, the land, and B, our jurisdiction under the OSRD bylaw. So, those are really separate issues, and the reason why I'm breaking it down is because you, as the purchaser and successor in interest for the property, have certain private rights under the easement, and we don't enjoy any of that. We have no business with respect to those rights. Our jurisdiction, this board's jurisdiction and rights derive from the zoning bylaw and from some statutes. So, that's as far as we can go. So, one thing that we are clearly not is the land court. You know, we can't give an opinion, we can't determine, you know, certain rights. I've read the document, it's been provided to the board, it's provided to me, and I've advised the board that we can't adjudicate who has which rights under it. So, we have to stay within the four corners of the OSRD bylaw, and so that's what the board has endeavored to do. So, we're aware of it, we've looked at it, but unfortunately, we just don't have the, the power, the authority, to make decisions based on the civil relationships between your neighbor and your property. So, I, I think Ms. O'Brien had consulted with an attorney. If the board's okay with me saying this, I, I would suggest the same thing as I was, would tell anyone. If you feel that you have rights that you'd like to explore or enforce or, or discuss with someone, you should discuss that with an attorney if you're choosing.
Mm-hmm.
And you may or may not have options that I'm not even aware of. So, I wouldn't even venture a guess as to what those might be.
Well, no, I wasn't, I was just making you aware of what I'm going to be doing, that's all.
And I think the board appreciates that very much.
It's very good. Thank you.
Yeah, and along the same lines, I think it's a good opportunity for you as the new butter to have a conversation with the individual who's going to be working this project, so the two of you can have a, you know, a man-to-man conversation, sometimes without legal counsel, just so you can have an understanding that, and then if things look like they're going to be complex or complicated or not being addressed in a manner that you're comfortable with, then, you know, you can start doing other avenues of investigation. But I always, you know, person-to-person conversation is, you're, you're a businessman, you know that, that's, that's what makes it work. And, and I, and we're happy that you're involved in this project with regards to a new property owner, and that we'll have more opportunity for agriculture to continue our community, because I think that's a, a strong thread to us. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
To that point, I bought some eggplant today and some carrots from Tendecrop Farm.
Is there anyone else that would like to present new information to the, to the board?
Yes.
Hi.
Do you, would you run moving, so I can put this up here, please? Thank you. I don't know.
We do, but I'm not sure how reliable it is, but we'll give it a shot.
I don't want to touch town property, you don't see a collapse on it.
Well, you're, you're the town council, so if anything bad happens, or...
Straighten it out. Have everybody sign a release.
Is this the best area for, for camera, Martha?
Oh, camera?
Yeah, I mean, yes, George will be able to see, and Ethan should be able to pick it up.
It will work, it won't collapse. Be careful with that.
Oh, yes, I will be. Just to answer any question you may have, I'm still a landowner here in Newbury, so I am continuing to have input into this property. And I am, I am, I think I am speaking more directly to Woody and the two ladies because I think you are more new to the committee and you're still learning and you're doing a good job. But I want to bring to your attention something that became, it's been clear to me for quite a while, but I haven't really had an opportunity to say anything about it. Before I do, I did want to bring up the condominium issue about, it's not a subdivision, it's not cycling. There is nowhere in the Table of Use Regulations that allows condominiums. Just for what it's worth, there is nowhere. If you look at all the zoning bylaws in Newbury, there is no zoning bylaw and there is nothing that says a condominium is allowed in Newbury. That's not what I was going to tell you about. Okay? Just, I was just thinking about it when you said that, so. Okay, now here it is, guys. You're not going to be happy, but. I don't know whether this will hold or not. Oh, wait a minute. Hold on. Oh, yeah, thank you. Thank you. All right. Okay. The yield is wrong. Why? You've been dealing with the OSRD rules and regulations. However, you need to go back to the zoning board rules and regulations, not just the OSRD. So, we'll start out with this one. This OSRD in Chapter 112.5.1, the yield plan should show, and I know you know this, but I'm going to tell you anyway. The yield plan should show maximum number of lots. The site, uh, the site under conventional development could have. Okay, so, how many lots could there be if it was just conventional? And of course, the answer we all know is four. So then, we go to, Chapter 117-6. The short version of this is, one dwelling on any lot. And that's the zoning bylaw. And it says, "No more than one building designed or available for use for dwelling shall be erected or placed or converted to use as such on any subdivision or elsewhere in the town, except where specifically allowed by the Town of Newbury zoning bylaw, without the consent, consent of the board." So, this is one dwelling, one lot. Down here, we have Chapter 97.3A.1. And this says, and this was in capital letters on the zoning page, not mine. "Only one structure shall be allowed on each separate lot. In all zones, we're allowed, except for shopping centers, farms, industrial complexes, community facilities and public utilities." And then it has, "Only one capital, structure shall be allowed on each separate lot." So, if we have one structure on each of the four lots, we have four lots and four structures. We do not have ten single-family homes. Whether the condominiums or single families. Now, here are some examples. Can you see what I'm doing?
Yes, I can see good enough.
Samples of the other OSRDs in Newbury. Each of them has one lot and one residence. Caldwell Farms had sixty-three lots in their yield plan. And they built sixty-three residences. Livingston, potentially Livingston Lane. Livingston Lane, which is also called Scott and Woods, it's a spot that's kind of near Colby's Farm. Oh, wait, actually, it's on High Hill. Those new houses out there. Their yield was nine lots. And they built nine houses. Marsh Meadow, their yield was five lots and they built five residences. And what I read online was that Coleman Drive has five lots, the OSRD out there, and they're building five residences. 105 High Road has four lots. And they want to build ten residences. Thank you for being patient. This is the part that we've missed. Chapter 112.5.1. The proponent shall have the burden of proof with regard to the maximum number of lots resulting from the design and engineering specifically shown on the yield plan. Not on the concept. That's mine. And also, I don't believe that's been done. Somewhere along the line, it was determined, and I don't know when, but it was determined that two families, a, a two-family on, on one lot somehow equals two single-family homes on two different lots. And that's not true. And I know because I've searched every single page to try to prove it. So, the last thing basically is that we, the proponent needs to prove how you go from four lots to ten lots or ten units on a condominium. It is not possible. And I don't think that he has or they have proven this. And I don't think they can prove it, is my point. They should be allowed to prove it, but I don't think they can. So, I understand that you've spent a lot of time on this. I know you have. Uh, that, it's not lost on me. You can see I've spent a lot of time too. But I think it's important that you reopen that. Very important. You can't just go on. So, this is where the proof should come from the Newbury zoning bylaws and rules and regulations of subdivisions and the Table of Use Regulations. Any questions or discussion?
No.
I'd love to hear from some of the new people.
Any questions?
No questions.
Any questions, Mary?
No questions.
I don't have any questions at the time.
Okay, great. Martha, just for clarification, was there one additional OSRD that wasn't listed?
Uh, there was the Wilshire Road.
Wilshire Road. And Wilshire Road was, was-
Was for two-family lots, which resulted in eight single-family houses.
So, I think that's important information that should be, we should just note.
I didn't have that information. I didn't know that.
Okay.
But I will tell you that the preponderance-
Okay.
-is one lot. And, and the other thing is, I don't know about that subdivision, how that got through because if it had two families on it, where's the proof that it should be for? Where is that proof? Maybe someone snuck through, I don't know. It happens.
I thank you for putting this information together and presenting it to the board.
My pleasure.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board tonight?
Can I just rebut one thing, if I may?
I'd rather not to get into rebuttals. I'm just looking for new information.
Okay.
Because I think what's going to happen from here is we're probably going to-
It wasn't a big rebuttal, it was just a statement made because it's misinformation.
Was there someone that wanted to say something? Just come on up, you, you name it, name and address, please.
Yes.
Thanks. And right to the microphone.
This, yes, this seems to be like every time we come in here, it's just-
Just say your name and address.
Angel Bobalan.
And you are from what?
Twenty-five Woodington.
Thank you very much.
In Newbury. Sorry. I just feel like every time something comes up, there's always some kind of change and different, different, different information all the time. And I just feel like something's being, you know, just different. How come now they want to change it to different things? You know, I just don't understand how it can go from, you know, tonight being they wanted to change it again. You know, I just-
So, let me try to help you with that. There's really nothing, as Attorney, uh, 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 we're indicated, there's nothing that is being changed tonight. The, 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 the plan that's before the board is the plan that's before the board. What's, what's looking at, and Brian, please help me if I misspeak, is there's, there's going to be a, there's, there's a, there's a consideration to do supplemental information that doesn't change the, the concept of the plan that will address the discrepancies between what our bylaw allows and, and, or the discrepancies within our bylaw. So, it doesn't change anything with the plan. It's more the moving pieces that make it dovetail. Because right now, it doesn't dovetail.
Right.
So, it's, it's-
So, what is making that not dovetail?
Well, we're, we're a community that over the years has grown and changed. We were an agricultural-based community, we became a residential community. And as that changed, development changes. And as development changes, sometimes the, the, the regulations, when they're written, are appropriate. And sometimes the regulations have to be modified based upon what the, what the, uh, community develops into or changes into. And, I mean, you know, some communities go into the, the pathway of being a green community.
Right, right.
And so, so there's whole regulations for that that were developed recently that are laid on top of existing regulations that allow things like that to happen. And so, what we're, what we're learning through this process is there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a gap. And we want to make sure that we, as a town, uh, address this with the regulations as they are in the most appropriate manner for an applicant, whether it's this applicant or any other applicant. So, the plan itself, as we have it right now, hasn't changed. Now, it has evolved and gone through different iterations over the past year and a half or two years.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's like always something's missing up.
I know. But this is where we're at now and there's a defined plan. And that's what the board is, is, has, is, is considerate, is considering. And there's no, nothing changed. And so, the discussion, you know, the, the Attorney Man explaining why she wanted to continue, it wasn't anything changing anything. It was, it was just the mechanics of how to get there.
Right, I understand. And it seems like the, if I remember correctly, it passed a couple of meetings, the open space. And I remember you saying it's not going to happen overnight if somebody has to own that open space. And now, tonight, you're saying it's going to take like three weeks for someone to look at this open space?
It's, it's, it's not that the open space is going to change, it's how it's going to-
No, and somebody's going to have to own it because they can't do nothing with it.
Well, that, that component has to be decided because there's a couple of different options when it comes to open space.
Right.
Brian, just, can you just explain what the couple of different options are?
Sure. And, and what I'm about to explain, they're all legal vehicles. So, in, in terms of what you see on the ground, you won't see any of this. These aren't changes that-
Oh, I know, but I mean, you just-
That have to do with the site configuration or plans or anything. These are things that get recorded at the Registry of Deeds.
Oh, no, I understand that, but it's a, it's a long process.
It is, and, but that would be true in any application, so, you know, whether-
Right, but now it's, it's, you said before-
But that hasn't changed, no. So, I mean, even from the get, from the very beginning of this, what might have been contemplated then was a conservation restriction, a statutory CR, as we like to say. So, in order to draft that, have it approved by the state, have it approved by the board, um, define a third party to hold it, and then ultimately get it recorded, that process takes a very long time. There's a lot of cooks in that kitchen. So, that was just as true then as it is now.
Right, but you said three weeks, but now it's, it was three months or some time. And if I recall, tonight was, it'd take three weeks.
No, those things happen after this process. So, the board outlines the, the mechanics of what will happen next in its decision. So, it needs to approve a plan. It needs to write conditions on that plan. And some of those conditions deal with what happens afterwards. So, who's going to get the open space? What open space is it? How is it going to be restricted? How's it going to be restricted? So, those things go in the decision.
Right.
But they don't play themselves out until the appeal period runs and the decision's recorded and all these other things happen. So, we don't see any of that necessarily. It hap, it's just legal paperwork that has to be reviewed and exchanged and processed. So, the plan never changes through all that. So, that part hasn't changed. So, one of the options is that the town may end up holding the open space-
Right.
And owning it in fee, it would be town property.
Oh, I understand that, but I just thought it took-
Another one might be that, you know, that the applicant or its successor holds it, but there's a restriction that the town holds. So, there's a couple of different, you know, permutations of that, um, that need to get explored. So, that would have to be, you know, played out in any event.
Yeah. I, I just feel like it just, this is like a longest process ever. You know, and if something doesn't, you know, go through, it's just something, you know, it's just nitty-gritty. You know what I mean? It's just, it's just, I don't know.
We, this board also feels the, um, your expression of the, the duration that this, this has taken in different iterations. And so, we're with you and we empathize with your statements.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not trying to, you know, you know, contradict anybody. It's just, it feels like, you know, something's always coming up at every meeting. You know, the last one, we come and nobody showed up at the last minute.
Well, that was a continuous.
And now, coming tonight, it almost wasn't going to be open, you know, so it's just-
Well, so what we did tonight was we asked the board if they wanted to continue or not.
Great, I'm happy for that, yes.
And we had a discussion about, we, we didn't have that opportunity last, last week.
Right, right.
And we wanted to make sure that if there was going to be a continuance, why. So, what we did instead was we opened the meeting. So, now the, the meeting is opened. We've had some testimony from, from people from the community. Uh, and once the testimony's concluded, the board will make a decision of what, what the next step is in this, in this, in this current open meeting.
Right, and I understand that and I thank you for-
If, if I understand you correctly, the last two, um, planning board meetings where we were going to, this one and the one before, where we were going to hear what you had to say.
Right.
All of a sudden, you come in tonight again and you get this frustration. So, probably exacerbated and fed the whole issue of being frustrated and exasperated with a very difficult but complicated process that has to be done just right.
Right. Oh, I understand, yeah.
And it is frustrating, so I, I, I get it.
I'm sure you guys are feeling the same thing, you know? But, okay, I just, thanks for listening and-
Thank you very much.
Understanding where, where we, the people are, you know, in the town. I pay taxes. You know, I do just as much as everybody else does.
And we appreciate you being here and sharing with us.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the community that would like to address the board tonight? Okay. Uh, before we pick a date for our continuance, I just want to kind of, um, discuss, discuss with our board our current schedule. We, historically, were meeting the first, first Wednesday of the month. And then we expanded to the first and third Wednesdays.
We always-
We always did, oh.
Always had two meetings a month.
You know, that, maybe that's where my mind wants to go. We want to go to just one month, one meeting a month. I want to be like conservation police.
Now, what we've been doing is three meetings a month.
Darn.
I'm on a sort of vacation.
Okay, all right.
We've expanded to three meetings a month, that's where the-
Yes, yes, it was getting hairy. But, um, what we have done in the past in the summertime is we've, we've gone to one meeting a month. And we're to the point where our, our applicant, um, uh, situation is very, we've, we've cleared the decks of most of our things, correct, Martha?
Yeah.
Okay. So, this is the one remaining public hearing that we have open? Okay. I don't think that this thing is going to be addressed by August 3rd, which is our next public hearing.
Fourth.
Okay.
August 4th.
August 4th, thank you.
Sorry.
No, no, keep me in line here. So, I, I, I would like the board to consider the, just having one meeting in August and not having two meetings in August, which would bring us to the first Monday in Sep, the first Wednesday in September, which would be-
September 1st.
September 1st. So, now, the question that I want to ask you, Brian, whether, is whether you think it's realistic that this be continued to September 1st or whether it should be continued to September, not Eve, September, um, it was my daughter who just popped up. Fifteenth, thank you. Whether we should continue this to September 15th. Uh, what do you think, Larry?
Like I said earlier, just give yourselves enough time. You know? We're all getting anxious and, and, and you are. Sure. I, I know you like coming to see us, but-
I love it. We, we did talk to Joe Sawaka and he said three weeks. And so did the other engineer, so it, it's the pleasure of the board.
I mean, it, all good things have to come to an end. And we've got to at least close out this chapter at some point in the very near future.
Okay. So, you're feeling September 15th?
It's fine with me. Thank you.
I prefer September 1st because I think we can get it done and it'll be over and it won't be on your calendar. Then maybe you don't have to have a September 15th.
I'm, I'm just building in cushion, historically.
I have to be honest with you, I'm away on the 15th, so that isn't going to work.
We also need to check with Attorney Winters' schedule as well.
It's my first vacation in two years, so I, I don't think I'm changing the 15th. I know.
Uh, let me just, George, do you have a preference of the, on the, for the, for the, this being continued to the first or the 15th of September? Do you have a preference, sir?
Either one would work for me. I want to make sure the attorneys have enough time to finish their job.
Yes.
Yes.
So, I would say the 15th would be about, 15th would be better than the first.
Okay, great, thank you.
I cannot be there?
No, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
I'm just asking, I'm asking the board their opinion.
Okay, I was just gonna say, ooh.
Woody, your feeling?
Well, I was gonna say the 15th as well, only to allow more time for the attorneys, but whatever needs to happen, needs to happen, so the first is fine too.
Okay, uh, Mary?
First.
First, okay, great. Um, and Brian, what's your availability?
Uh, I can be available on either date.
Okay, uh, Martha?
Right now, yes.
Okay, um, so I understand that you're not gonna be here on the 15th. Um, so, I would entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to the 1st of September at 7:15 PM.
So moved.
Thank you, Woody, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Leslie. Uh, discussion on the motion, any discussion on the motion, Larry?
Is there any appetite for continuing the first September meeting to the 8th?
Let's see, is there appetite for continuing? I, I like this, 'cause it came at the right time, it came in discussion, beautiful, thank you. Uh, is there any appetite to this, to, instead of having it on the 1st to the 8th? Uh, George, how would you feel about the 8th versus the 1st?
Either one works.
Okay, great.
It is a good compromise.
All right, thank you, I, we love compromise. Oh, Leslie?
Works for me.
Uh, Woody?
Sounds good.
Uh, Mary?
Are cookies involved?
We'll have cookies for you. Uh, Brian?
But it's those cookies, and they might be a little hard by that.
Brian, how are you for the 8th?
8th is fine with me.
All right, attorney man, how do, how are you for the 8th?
Just absolutely fine, thank you very much.
All right, wonderful. I would, well, on that discussion, I appreciate the discussion. Is there any other further discussion, uh, 'cause we can defeat that motion? Uh, any discussion from George? Great, Leslie, discussion?
No.
Woody, discussion?
None.
Uh, Mary, discussion? Okay, then on the motion, um, uh, how do you vote on the motion that stands, which would be the first? We would, if we wanted on the 8th? You would vote?
I would vote no.
Okay, you would vote no.
Unless Woody wants to withdraw his motion.
Okay, no, no, no. Uh, George, how would you vote on the current motion?
No.
Thank you. Leslie, how would you vote on the motion?
No.
Very good. Uh, Woody, how would you vote on the motion?
No.
Thank you, Woody, and, and, okay, great. Uh, I'd entertain a motion now to continue this, uh, to the 8th of September. There's a motion, thank you, sir.
7:15 PM.
7:15 PM, is there...
Reconsider the prior.
Oh, jeez, is there a second?
I'll second.
Oh, thank you, Woody, there's a second. Any discussion on the motion? George, uh, Larry, in discussion?
No discussion.
George, any discussion on having this on the 8th? Thank you, any discussion, Leslie? Wonderful, any discussion? No, any discussion?
Genius, Larry.
He is, he is, he is, he did it the right time, put it right in the discussion. Okay, on the motion, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you. How do you vote, George?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
And how do you feel?
Yes.
Wonderful, and you're good for the 8th?
I am.
So, this, uh, public hearing will continue on the 8th of September, 7:15 PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Okay, great. All right, continuing our agenda. Martha, I love this word when it appears under, under old business, it says...
I just have one question.
Sure, go ahead.
I'll make it quick. So, am I to understand that you're gonna be discussing the yield as I presented it before the next meeting?
Well, what you did was you gave this board information, just as anybody has given information, and it's gonna be something that's gonna, will be decided and discussed when the decision is, 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 when we get to the decision component.
The decision for?
The plan. So, when anyone, people give us testimony, the board absorbs the testimony, we each make our own independent decisions, uh, and then we did, we come to a decision. The decision is, uh, is drafted, it's directed. We direct it to the attorney to, to make corrections, and then the board speaks on it.
Okay, now, that sounds like you're just, the goal with what the plan is that you have. But if the yield is not right, which it isn't, you can't say anything to the plan, you can't go anywhere.
So, I, I don't want to get into a, a, you know, side A, side B. Uh, you have a position, I appreciate your position, I appreciate your information. The members of the board, they each take in the information, they make a decision as to what they feel, and then, then we come back and we make our decision.
And that's, but I do ask at the end, um, how can a decision be made for more than four? The yield is four.
So...
So, I, I wanted the board to come back and explain to me, and have the proponent explain to me, or everybody else, why? Why is it more than four? That's, that's what I was hoping for the next, for the next meeting. I was hoping to get that answer. That's why I asked the question at the end.
Do you wanna help me, Larry?
It's a legitimate question. Okay, it really is. The, the thing I'm struggling with right now is we've closed the public hearing this evening.
We have.
So, I don't know that we can...
Continue the discussion.
You're asking a legitimate question, Margaret, quite frankly, we could've answered it while we were still in the public hearing.
But there wasn't any rebuttal. It wasn't until you got on to the ten lots and all that.
Yeah, I, I know, I know.
But I did ask it while I was standing right there.
As long as the public hearing is open, you can entertain anything at the next meeting. There's been no final vote.
And we hope, the meeting...
Hearing's still open, so you can take that up.
Larry, I did ask it. I asked it while I was standing there. And I was hoping that, you know, I didn't say, I hope we'll get the answer by the next meeting, but that was implied.
You did.
So, thank you, Larry.
And I'm sorry, we, we probably could have and should have answered your question more directly during, during the hearing, but I think we're stuck by the fact that this public hearing tonight has been closed. And we can certainly discuss it at the next one.
The, the process has not stopped, the process has not stopped. It's just that the hearing for tonight has been closed. It is continued to September 8th.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, appreciate it. All right, um, so, under old business, I did see the word none, is that correct, Martha?
That is correct.
That is a beautiful thing. Under new business, we have 68 Green Street, Chapter 61A, Notice of Intent to Sell, and I believe that information was distributed to board members, and it's in the package. So, Martha, do you wanna drive this for a little bit?
Yeah, so just briefly, um, as you all recall, uh, the board approved a three-lot subdivision for that parcel sometime back. And, um, the property is in Chapter 61A and needs to go through a process to come out. So, the applicant has submitted a notice of intent to sell to the, to the town, to the select board, and to the planning board and the assessors. And the select board will be holding a public hearing on this, uh, notice of intent to sell next Tuesday. And so, they have asked, um, various boards and committees and departments to...
Martha, can you speak up just a bit?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much.
To, I'll be blasting this, that's the only...
You know, to, to discuss it, to see if you wanna make any input or recommendations while they consider this at their public hearing next week. Uh, the considerations are generally whether, whether there's any, any value in the parcel for municipal use or as open space, conservation is open space, or as agricultural land. And the select board can either vote to exercise its right of first refusal, in which case it will have to match the purchase price, uh, in the PNS, which in this case is a million dollars, or vote to assign its right of first refusal to a nonprofit such as Essex County Greenbelt, or vote to waive its right of first refusal and allow the sale to go forward.
So, a feeling from the planning town director?
Well, I think my own feeling is that since, you know, this is an isolated lot, it's not, it's not close to any other, you know, open space that's held by Essex County Greenbelt, it's surrounded by residential properties. So, the likelihood of a nonprofit like Essex County Greenbelt being interested is probably pretty small. I think for, um, for municipal use, the town has been more interested in properties that have water and sewer, this has neither. Uh, we know that the perks on the property are kind of limited, it supports three lots that were approved.
So, we can't put a town well there.
Might be, if, I don't know.
Might be, if, okay. Which would be one of the best interests for the town, is to, would do the crow water source, which, okay.
Yeah, and I, I know that there was a, sort of a hydrological exploration done a few years ago, and I don't know if that was an area that was even identified as, you know, being a possible water source.
All right. Larry, your feelings?
I, I can't imagine the town's gonna spend a million dollars on this property.
Okay. George, could you hear the conversation?
I can hear the conversation, and I don't hear anything that's encouraging, me to sit in the town, you really wanna take this.
Wonderful, thank you.